All right. Good evening. Welcome to the November 12th, 2024 Foxborough School Committee Meeting. Just to note, this meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. We're going to start off the night with open public comment. And right now, I'm seeing no open public comment. No one has signed up for open public comments. We're going to just move right on to the approval of minutes. So we do have seven minutes in here for September 17th for the regular meeting.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
There's no additions or edits. I move that we accept the meeting minutes from September 17th, 2024, as presented.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion, comments? No? All right. All in favor of approval of the meeting's minutes from September 17th? Raise your hand. And that is a 5-0-0 vote. Accepted the minutes. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to everybody's favorite part of the meeting, Teaching and Learning Highlight. So we have Learn, Laugh, and Lead. We have Ms. Frazier and Mr. Diorcy if you want to come up with this wonderful group of students and give us your presentation. Thanks for being here, everyone. This is awesome, by the way. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
It's nice to be here. Thanks for having us. I'm really, really excited to share a little bit about this brand-new opportunity that we've created at Ahern Middle School. So we are the Ahern Leadership Club, and we've been running a program since the beginning of October called Learn, Laugh, Lead. This program was completely designed by these eighth graders here. I said, hey, what do you want to do? And they came up with the ideas. We did a little bit of planning. We took maybe two, three weeks to scope out and plan what we were going to do. And it's been kind of running real smoothly since then. We're going to talk a little bit about how we got our start, our weekly routines and procedures, both before our meetings with fifth graders and during those meetings. And then we're going to talk about our favorite parts, their favorite parts. I'm going to add my favorite parts, too. And then if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. Going to pass it off to Grady. Would you like to share our sort of mission statement?
All right. Learn, Laugh, Lead is an opportunity for fifth-grade students to work with eighth-grade mentors on academic and organization skills while also engaging in fun, social enrichment activities, and games with their mentors and other fifth-grade students.
So this idea sort of got its start at the end of last year through my work with the web program. And when the, these eighth-grade students, when they were in seventh grade, when they applied for web, we had over 120 applicants for the web program. And we were, which is incredible, but we only have a certain amount of spots every year. So right away, I'm thinking, okay, there's a need for sort of a broadening of leadership opportunities through web, both for students who are web leaders and also for kids who might not be, beyond the web program, which happens just during school. So right away, my thought was, okay, leadership club. What does that look like? I don't know. And immediately, I thought, if I want eighth-grade students to take ownership of a leadership program, it's got to come from them, which is what happened. Like I said, our first meeting on the school calendar, it said after-school leadership club. I had no agenda. My agenda was, what does this club look like? Immediately, the, the idea was, we want to work with fifth graders. We want to be mentors. We want to, can we do homework help? Can we play games with them? Yeah, that sounds, that sounds great. Let's do both. So generally speaking, the routines for our Learn, Laugh, Lead program is 30 minutes of academic work with fifth graders, followed by 30 minutes of social activities, games that they might be familiar with through web, or camp-type games, things like that. We have, we started with a promo video. Maybe. There it is. Not sure if that's going to.
Mr. Beck, maybe? Is there a push-play on the video or to click on the picture? Why don't we move on to the next slide? We'll go back. If he gives the highlights, I'll let you know. Go back to it. I'm sure it was amazing.
We started by promoting the idea to fifth graders and then moved on to sign-ups and sort of our weekly logistics of how every week works. Lilly, is this you?
Yeah. Okay. So the week before, we all meet in Senior Diorcy's room, and we kind of like talk and plan out what, like, what games and academic work the fifth graders might come in with, like, the following week. And so we kind of just talk about that and plan it out. And then, once we feel like we have a good gist of what we're going to be doing, we send out paper sign-ups to all the teachers, and they'll put them somewhere in their classrooms. And students who want to come and join will, are able to go up and write their name on the paper, as well as teacher recommendations. So, yeah. And then we get the papers back, and like, we kind of just talk about, like, who's coming and, like, just see how many people we need to plan for. And then we send out a form to the fifth-grade students who will be coming to the, coming to the club. And it kind of will just, it'll go in their backpacks, and they'll take it home and go to their parents, just to inform them that, like, they're able to come to the, come to the club next week. So, yeah.
Awesome.
During the meeting, for the first 30 minutes, we normally start with an organizational check-in. So if fifth graders need help keeping their class materials organized, we're there to help them during that time. Then during the academic work time, students get organized into groups by their choice of assignment. And then groups of us, eighth graders, are able to help them with their work. And any, if they had any trouble in class, or they had any work that they needed help with, then we're there for them to help them with that. And for the final 30 minutes, we like, we all come together to play web-like games and other games that we have planned in advance for the fifth graders. This gives all the fifth graders a chance to interact with students from other houses that they do not get to spend time with during the school day. And it's just a chance for us all to come together and get to know each other better.
So I just wanted to finish our presentation with sharing some of our favorite parts of, of every week and of the club experience so far. I'm going to go first, because I think I have a little bit of a different perspective than they will. My favorite part is watching the 16 eighth graders in this group become true, authentic leaders. And it's, it's really, really cool for me, because I've known all of these kids for a very, very long time. I've known all of them since at least fifth grade, but I've known half of them since they were first graders. So seeing them step up into a leadership role for me as a teacher is, like, mind-blowingly awesome and, like, just the coolest part of my job. That's my favorite part.
That's awesome. Can we, yes, start at the end? Let us.
I love bonding with the kids and helping them in their academics and helping them get better.
Awesome.
My favorite part about Learn, Laugh, Lead is getting to know more about the fifth graders and what they're like. And I like getting to, like, help the fifth graders. And that's basically it.
Perfect. That's awesome.
I think it's, like, good opportunities and, like, a ways to sharpen my leadership skills.
I love the connections I get to make with the fifth graders and even seeing them in the halls at school and even outside of school and sports activities and just seeing them outside.
You probably get so excited.
I like, I like getting to know the fifth graders outside of my web group from the other classes.
I really like meeting new fifth graders and building relationships and connections with them.
I love helping the fifth graders with their homework and see them progress with their learning throughout the year.
I love meeting kids that are from my old fifth-grade house and being able to make connections with them and past experiences.
I really enjoy bonding with the fifth graders and making new connections with them. Every time I see this one fifth grader in the hallway, he always comes up to me and says hi to me and always says he can't wait for the next meeting to happen.
That's so sweet.
So to end, we'd love to answer whatever questions you might have for us.
I have a question. How often do you guys meet?
We meet once a week. It's usually on Mondays.
Awesome. Anyone else have any questions? No? This is amazing what you've done. I love that it was a spillover from, from all the additional people that wanted to be involved in web. And it's such a great idea, and everybody seems so excited about it. It's awesome. I love all your, all your engagement and excitement. Makes me excited. Bren?
In terms of, one, do you all think this should continue next year?
Yeah.
I figure. Cool. And I would encourage you all to just think about that, because you all should, you know, feel empowered, since you built this thing, to leave, you know, advice for next year's, next year's eighth graders. And whether they take it or not, I'm sure they'll be able to shape their own thing. But I'm sure the whole school can learn from you, just as the fifth graders are now. So thanks for doing what you're doing.
Hundred percent.
Just like to comment, when we think about web, Ms. Frazier, this goes back many years, and you are very active in bringing web to the middle school. And to have the problem of having too many web leaders, I think that really speaks to the program over the years and the impact that you've been able to make, because people talk. And so then if they're interested to be web leaders by eighth grade, and you have too many to accommodate, and you have to build another club like this, I think that really speaks to the culture of the school and the leadership already that's taking place with the students in the school. So congratulations.
Fantastic. You guys are awesome. Thank you so much. And you guys all did great. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senior Diorcy.
Thank you.
His excitement is infectious all the time. All right. Going to move on to the superintendent update.
All right. Just a few updates and reminders. One, I sent out a reminder that principals had already sent out that our musical will be taking place at Foxborough High School this weekend. So we're hoping many will log on and get their tickets for Friday or for Saturday. It's Your Good Man Charlie Brown, which is a great opportunity for children of all ages to attend. So take your family, go Friday, go Saturday, go both days. They've worked really hard to put on that production. The other parent workshop that's coming up, which is another event for people to attend, is Parenting Children and Teens Experiencing Anxiety. That's another one that we've done in partnership out of McLean Hospital, and that has gone out from a number of principals and their newsletters as well. That's on November 21st. That is, it's like a lunch and learn. We have those that the evenings don't work, so that is 12 o'clock to 1 o'clock, and you can sign up with the Zoom link. And again, I think the important piece is, is it doesn't show who's on that. So if you're maybe thinking about, like, I would really like to listen and to get the information, but I don't want my name or anything like that to be out there on the Zoom call, it's not. So I think that's an important piece for parents and caregivers to know. We do have playoffs that are taking place on Friday as well with our football team. They're going against Dedham. So that is at 7:00 PM. And then another event that is coming very soon, which is the BIT Auction. That is going to be held on Friday, November 22nd, and that's over at the Envision Hotel in Mansfield. So you can get your tickets. Those flyers are coming out through principals. That's a great fundraiser that ends up impacting all of our elementary schools in a wonderful way, and a ton of work by many, many people go into that. So we are very grateful for all of the work that our parents and caregivers do, to be able to bring that together.
May I just make a quick comment? You do not have to go to participate and go to their website and bid on silent auction items, too. That's another way to support.
Another great way to support. So, yes. We have parent-teacher conferences that are coming up. Just as a reminder, information about those have gone out from principals, but that's a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the successes of your students. So make sure to watch for those emails and to sign up for conferences. And the only other update that I wanted to mention is, so we've had on the agenda here a couple of different meetings on the audit committee. We had an unexpired term where school committee needed to appoint a member. And so we have Ms. Caroline Vines. She's actually here with us this evening. She comes with a wealth of experience from Foxborough Company Schneider, as an electrical engineer for 38 and a half years, I think, before she retired.
Right.
And has many different experiences and different organizations as being their treasurer as well. So wanted to have her as part of the update here. It's something we need to have on a future meeting as far as the actual appointment and vote by school committee, but she was able to be here this evening, so I wanted to provide that as part of the update.
Okay. Well, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to serve on that committee. I know Paul Ivanoski, we worked together on our finance committee at my church, and he may be aware that there was this opening. And I thought, yeah, okay, maybe this would be a good opportunity to, for me to see how town committee work goes on. So thank you for the opportunity.
That's fantastic. Does anybody have any questions?
Were you able to, yeah, talk to them about, or anyone else on the committee or in admin about, you know, what the expectations are?
Paul did fill me in a bit, yes.
And you're not running away. Excellent.
Well, I said, you know, it was, he said, well, it's, it's a year commitment, but actually, most of the year is gone, so it's not really a full year. And then it didn't seem like it was too intense. There's some interviews and then a recommendation. And so it seems like a good opportunity for me to get my feet wet and see what's going on within the town.
Well, I'm very grateful. I mean, for one, just because I think various chairs and other members of the committee have tried to make sure that we have representation in this role. And it's, it's, you know, it's not always easy, because, you know, typically, well, often, in a town our size, the same people get asked to do things. And just if somebody's, hasn't had a chance to do any of that before, wants to step forward, I'm so, so very grateful.
Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Just thank you for stepping up. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Good.
And if you like it and want to stay more than a year, you can always opt in, too.
Well, thanks for being here. We appreciate it, and it was great to meet you. Thank you so much. We'll put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll have a discussion and a vote.
Thank you.
On that, yeah, thanks so much. We're going to move on to School Committee Student Representatives. So we have Yasmeen and Stevie here.
All right. So as was already mentioned, there is the musical happening this weekend, and then also playoffs for football this weekend. And the team is also getting ready for the Thanksgiving game, which will be fun. We have the Powderpuff Game sign-ups just went out for pep rally and everything. That's all starting up, sign-ups for our games and everything during that. That'll be fun. And then we'll also have winter sports coming up soon, because fall sports has, is coming to an end, which everyone will be signing up for that soon. We'll have a whole bunch of different ones. I think it's like 10 or so starting up soon. And then Yasmeen?
The other day, we did have the open house, and a lot of students came in and talked about, we talked about a lot of different clubs and stuff that's been happening around the school. And a lot of the students were very, like, intrigued and had a lot of questions about it. It was really fun. I got to meet a lot of seventh and eighth graders, and they definitely are a different breed. They're definitely a different generation.
Also, we had, like, in the middle of October, the French exchange students came, and it was really fun. I wasn't part of the exchange, but I am a French student. I've taken French for, like, the last whatever years. And I've got, like, to know a lot of French people and more about their culture and more about their, like, French slang, and I got to learn a lot more about them, and they were really happy and fun to be here with.
Awesome.
Yeah. And that is all we got.
That's all you got?
It's a lot. Thank you.
I, I have no idea how many days until the next vacation. We're hearing from the gallery.
Eight full days. We have half-days the following week.
Eight full days and some half-days till, till Thanksgiving vacation. Thanks, Joe.
Don't forget, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, one less week this year.
Yeah. Well, I just want to thank you guys for your attention to detail and your update. Thank you very much. All right. We're going to move on now to the Elementary School Improvement Plan. Mr. Stanton is unfortunately sick, so he can't be with us here tonight. We have Dr. Morrissey, and we have Mr. Worth.
Hi. Good evening, school committee members. Always a pleasure. I, even though Mr. Stanton isn't here, because there is such tight alignment, Ms. Morrissey and I will present on behalf of all three schools. Just to give you a little bit of background, Ms. Morrissey and I started in this role at the same time, two and a half years ago. This is our third year. During that time, we, we took an opportunity at the beginning of our, starting here, to, to take a look at the school improvement plans, really do, like, an overhaul and an alignment to the, the District Plan for Success, and also align them to one another, so that there was strong alignment across the three elementary schools. Now, going into the third year, we haven't made too many changes this year. We also recognize that this is the final year under this overarching, these overarching four pillars that are part of the Plan for Success before that changes. So a lot of our plans in here, a lot of our objectives, will be wrapping up this year. So as we go through, we'll really try to highlight a few changes that we made this year, but some of what you'll hear is very similar to what you've heard in the past two years. Just a couple pictures. Like I said, we are a very close-knit, very closely-aligned team. That is important, because, you know, we, we plan together, we meet together almost every week, we're in daily communication with one another. And aside from making our work more enjoyable and making our schools more similar to one another, that also really matters from a strategic standpoint. It, like I said, it helps our plans to be the same. It helps our schools to run in a very similar fashion. And when something is not running as planned, it helps us to kind of take a look at why that is, as well. So under pillar one, facilities and infrastructure, our strategic objective was to provide a safe, secure, supportive, responsive, and innovative learning environment for all students and staff in our buildings. Under this strategic objective, there's been two new initiatives that we've added in this final year. Develop and design a plan for a STEM learning space, really looking at what science, technology, engineering, and mathematics spaces will look like in our buildings moving forward. They often involve, as you can see in these pictures, many materials, tools, and different sorts of setups that aren't sometimes in alignment with the way that we have our classrooms already set up. So thinking about how we use existing spaces and also have the ability through carts and temporary ways to transform existing spaces into spaces that will be used for, for STEM components. We've already started to do this a little bit through the use of our STEM carts. Etole Elementary School this past year receives a STEM cart. It has materials, tools, it has great instructional videos for teachers. Karen Washburn, who's a fourth-grade teacher at Burl, has been doing a lot of curriculum work during the summers to get that up and running. And these are some pictures on the top from her classroom, where she's been experimenting with kinetic robots and building those in the classroom using those materials. Our hope in the future is to really have a dedicated space or a dedicated plan for a schedule that will allow a space to be used, at least in part, for STEM projects. We've also been aligning our school's crisis and response plan with district standards. We have a strong commitment to safety in our building and making sure that we are continually, continually looking at our safety procedures and ensuring that those safety procedures are well-known by everyone in the community and that we're practicing those safety procedures throughout the year. We will also be looking at those safety procedures this year as part of a district crisis response team, which will look at the alignment between the different schools. And that falls under our school district, school crisis response teams as well, just making sure that we are, you know, responding to any emergencies in the building and that we are practicing those responses on a regular basis. Under pillar two, none of our initiatives have changed. Our strategic objective remains the same, to provide opportunities for educators to collaborate and create common equitable learning experiences. Two highlights, though, even though these initiatives haven't changed, under the first one, which addresses multi-tiered systems of support, we have started to provide some staff trainings on our inclusive practices playbook. The inclusive practices playbook was new to us towards the end of last year. Dr. Burrow's organized team to create that inclusive practices playbook, and it was also adopted as the state, as a model of what that should look like for other schools. So we've been starting to bring that in. We begin with a self-assessment for all teachers in the building. They complete the self-assessment during our staff meeting. That allowed them to look at how they're using some of those inclusive practices in that playbook in their daily practice. The inclusive practices is aligned with our MTSS model, and it also serves as a good foundation for training for new staff members as well. And then jumping down to the bottom, always looking at common planning time and how we can expand that to make sure that we're providing the best experience for our teachers to be able to collaborate during the school day in the benefit of our students.
Okay. So pillar three is the well-being, and our strategic initiative, objective there is to provide the necessary supports to ensure healthy minds and healthy bodies for all members of the school community. The major change that we have with this one is we've implemented or discussed collaborations with teachers, counselors, and the nurses to monitor student attendance and address chronic absenteeism through student attendance plans. In looking at our absenteeism rate from last year, all three schools, as you know, we are pretty consistent. Our absentee rate was consistent as well, with 94.7% of our students attending school on a regular basis, which is pretty, pretty good for an elementary school. However, there's still room for improvement. So we're going to, through the three schools, devise a plan to help address that, and it will be a tiered, a multi-tiered system of support plan. Typically, the chronic absenteeism is defined as missing 10% or more of the school year. So by the end of the school year, if students miss 18 days or more, that's considered chronic absenteeism. So we monitor several times throughout the year, and if any student has five absences, they'll get an initial letter saying, you know, we're watching your, your child's attendance. This is what we're noticing. If that continues, they'll get another letter, at which point they're invited in to meet with the principals and have conversations about how we can help support to get students to school on time. So we're looking at adding additional supports in place to help support families who may be struggling with that. And then for pillar four, the diversity, equity, and inclusion in belonging. The strategic objective there is to foster and strengthen the respect and actions of staff, students, and families to celebrate diversity, ensure equity, and practice universal inclusion. Our major change there is to utilize communication tools and strategies to ensure all families have access to school information and educational opportunities. We've noticed that with the changing populations at the, each of our schools, that we may not be reaching all of the families with the school information. They may be missing newsletters or important documents that may come home from school. I know at Igoe School, we have about 26 different languages spoken, and the other schools have multiple languages as well. So we're working together to come up with the most effective way that we can reach all of our families, so that we can strengthen our school communities across the board. And that wraps up our major changers for this year between the three schools.
We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
Fantastic. Anyone have any questions? Comments? All right. Wow. Well, this was a really great presentation. Obviously, a lot of work and thought went into it. I love, personally, if, just from where I sit, I love the alignment with all three schools. It really, we've watched your relationship grow. It really, we've watched your relationship grow. It started out with one selfie, now there's a whole page of selfies up there. And it really, that alignment really makes such a difference in the district. So, thank you for all your hard work and your obvious friendship, too. I'm sure that helps with collaboration, but it's, it's a good feeling. Any other?
Well, like, it's, a comment is I typically have lots of questions on the school improvement plan. No, I do. But just the, the work towards alignment towards the Plan for Success and with each other shows. And even within it, I mean, it's not, you have your different routes that you're taking within the three buildings, because you, you know, we have slightly different populations and are in different places with different things. So, anyway, it's just very evident to me, the amount of work and thought that went into it, both to personalize it for your own building, but then also, as you mentioned, Mr. Worth, to bring it in line with the Plan for Success and those goals and also with each other, which is, just, I just want to say thank you for the work, which is just obvious throughout reading these.
Thank you. Thank you for the continued support as well.
Thank you. And Mr. Stanton always remembers to take the selfies. I'll call him out for that. He's not here tonight, but he would appreciate that.
I do love it. It was so funny when you took the first one.
There's one in every crowd.
I was like, oh, that's so awesome. It's so great, they're so aligned. And then I did notice the whole page with all the selfies. I think it's great, honestly. It's nice. So, well, thank you very much for being here. If there's no other questions, we'll move on to the next agenda item. Thank you. All right. So, we have the 2024 MCAS baselines and benchmarks report and review of results. And we've, MCAS has been in the news a lot, we're talking about it a lot, so.
We're going to talk about that tonight, I promise.
Yes.
So, as our presenters get settled at the front of the room, I will get us started. I don't mind grabbing the remote, too.
Dr. Burrows, I do notice on the agenda that we had an action requested on the previous agenda item, and I don't know if that's accurate or not. Do we need to approve those?
So, by state law, it doesn't have to be. We have typically in the past had the school committee accept the school improvement plans. So, if you want to take a vote to accept the school improvement plans, that is what you have done in the past. By state law, it is not a requirement.
What's the will of the committee? Would anyone like to take a vote on that, on the school improvement plans? Brian?
Yeah, I mean, more just for, I think it's more just for an expression of our opinions and support for the record. But Dr. Berdus is right. It's like, yeah, it's a fait accompli, so.
Michelle, any feel about it?
I'm happy to show our support. Sure, with a vote.
So, let's just make a motion. So, I make a motion that we approve the elementary school improvement plans as presented this evening.
Thanks, Rob. Second?
There we go. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Oh, no, it's fine.
That was a good catch.
So, in front of you, you have a memo that actually highlights the purpose of tonight's presentation and also makes some, some key points about the changes to the high school graduation requirement based on the outcome of ballot question two. I'm, I'm not going to read that language to you, but you do have it in front of you so that you can see those changes. Tonight's presentation is an annual presentation that we've made here in Foxborough consistently for, for a number of years. You will find in front of you a multi-page report, complete with a table of contents, and also a presentation for tonight. We are not going to go through every single data point. I promise you, there's a lot of data in this report and in the presentation. Instead, we're going to highlight the curriculum and instructional changes that we've made as a result of the data and have our curriculum directors and department heads speak to the changes that they're making throughout the school year and prioritizing as a result of, of our student outcome data. And you can stop me at any point if you have any questions about the, the first couple of slides here. So, just as a reminder, as Mr. Worth and, and Ms. Morrissey had mentioned earlier, multi-tiered systems of support has been a critical part, a critical component to our work within our Plan for Success. You can see it across each of our pillars, our teaching, learning, and pedagogy pillar, well-being, and diversity, equity, and inclusion. Part of, part of our work with multi-tiered systems of support has included our participation in those DESI MTSS academies. What has come with that, as you know, is an intense amount of time and resources to get our, our staff really comfortable with looking at data and making decisions about curriculum and instruction as a result of that data. And our curriculum directors and department heads have been leading that work and really doing an amazing job at it. They're, they're really fantastic at what they do. This process of analyzing data actually begins in August. So, what you're seeing now, even though it's the second week in November, we've been working on this since August. We get that preliminary information, we look at last year's student outcome data, we compare it to state assessments and national assessments, and we make some decisions, some logistical decisions about what our focus is going to be for the upcoming school year based on that information. So, I'm going to address the elephant in the room before we move into the remainder of the presentation. The yes vote for ballot question two does eliminate the MCAS. As a high school graduation requirement, it does not eliminate the MCAS, just for clarification for our committee and also for our viewers at home. There is a state language that requires a competency determination for all high school students in the state of Massachusetts. Currently, that competency determination, I included three key points here that I wanted the committee to be aware of. It's based on academic standards for 10th graders in mathematics, science, social studies, foreign language, and English. It also is, it also included in that definition is satisfactory completion of coursework that is in an MCAS-tested subject. So, again, that would be English, mathematics, and science. And then there's an additional piece that is in your memo and highlighted in that underlined, that underlined portion, that's the new language underneath Massachusetts' general law, and any additional areas determined by the State Board of Education. So, that piece, Dr. Berdus and myself were on a commissioner update call this afternoon. We do not have any additional information other than what you see on this slide. We have been informed that changes could go into effect as early as December 5th. However, we don't have any additional information on what those changes might be. Any questions?
Just to clarify what that means? Meaning, like, we haven't, don't yet have, if, can you go back one?
Oh. Here?
No, one more, sorry.
One more.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have a determination of what satisfactory completing coursework means yet.
So, the satisfactory completing coursework in the areas measured by the MCAS, actually that, to me, my interpretation is our existing high school graduation requirements. So, our existing high school graduation requirements are four years of English, four years of mathematics.
Passing the courses.
Passing those courses, correct.
Okay.
So, I have every reason to believe, I'm confident to say this, that our local high school graduation requirements will stand. And the, the remaining unknown is what those additional areas determined by the state might be or might look like.
And last point within that. For students who have IEPs and coursework that might be heavily modified, in the past we've done an MCAS alt, like, almost like a portfolio gathering type of thing, is there a sense whether that will fall by the wayside and be solely marked by coursework? Or any, any banter about those, those routes?
I honestly couldn't speak to it, other than the outcome of that ballot question does remove the MCAS assessment.
Right.
So, I, I would imagine that that is inclusive of MCAS alt. However, we've, we've not received any additional direction at this point.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Any, any other questions?
Hopefully, before the end of the year, we'll get some, it sounds like, from the Department of Ed, we'll get a little more clarification, maybe?
I'm, I'm actually hopeful that by the December 5th date, when, when this could potentially, when, when the law could potentially come into view. That we'll have those come into effect. Thank you, I couldn't think of the word. We will have that additional information. So, stay, stay tuned. Over the course of the next few weeks, we should get additional information and we'll, of course, communicate it to the committee.
And one other thing to note is, so like, the November retest, it's still taking place because it's before the December date. And the question might be, well, why should someone take the November retest? And, and, you know, one of the things is there's things tied to MCAS with scholarships. And you might think, okay, well, what does that mean? If you have somebody as an example that moves into Massachusetts and they're interested in making sure that they have the MCAS and they're wanting to do well to be able to get, whether it's the Copley or the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship, something like that, then they need that score for that. So, there's other reasons that are there, too. But to Dr. Burrows' point, as they said in that call this afternoon, we'll continue to get more, you know, frequently asked questions answered as, in the next couple of months, or the next month.
Yes, and the, in the grade 10 MCAS assessment will continue. So, thank you for mentioning that. There is no indication that this is going to negatively impact the scholarships that are available to our high performers on the MCAS. Also, any student that has previously met the competency determination, like, for example, our 10th graders that have just passed the MCAS and met that competency determination, that's not going to be taken away from those students. They've met it underneath the terms and conditions that existed at the time, so that the state is, is going to honor that. As would be the case with any student that passed the November retest. Okay. Okay, so, there is an existing statewide accountability system that is inclusive of our performance on MCAS assessments, including MCAS composite scores, student growth percentiles, and as well as additional factors at the high school level, including the graduation rates, student enrollment in advanced placement courses. So, all, all of our existing statewide accountability indicators are, are still in place. They exist. We'll continue to get accountability percentiles based on our performance on statewide accountability indicators. And if you recall, from one or two school committees ago, those accountability percentiles are actually what earned Taylor Elementary School a, an opportunity to apply for a National Blue Ribbon Award. And they have just come back from, from DC to receive that award just this past week. So, that statewide accountability system did, did reward the Taylor School for, for their high marks across those indicators. Tonight's presentation is going to focus on benchmark assessments at the local, state, and national level. We're going to talk about our local assessments, our local diagnostics, universal screeners, common assessments, and how our local data has compared to statewide MCAS performance as well as those national exams. Also, I realized this evening, because I was preparing for tonight's presentation, that the AHERN in grade eight will be participating in the National Assessment of Education Progress exam this year. That will happen sometime between January and March of this school year. So, our, our eighth graders at the AHERN will be a part of that NAEP assessment data coming out soon. This is just a reminder, I put this slide up every year, but we are, we're out of the pandemic. However, there are a number of grade levels where the impact of the pandemic is, is still coming into view. For example, when I think about our 10th grade students, they've just recently participated in an MCAS assessment that assesses seventh, eighth, ninth, and 10th grade standards. It's a, it's a legacy assessment. It doesn't dig deep into just one particular grade level. So, those students were actually directly impacted by the pandemic in sixth and seventh grade and, and tested on, on those assessment years during their grade 10 test. Just as a reminder, as we're still wrapping our heads around, where are we coming off of four years out of that pandemic year? There's a little bit of data that I wanted to share with you this evening that is about to become public. Currently, the views of climate and learning surveys are administered voluntarily at the end of MCAS assessments in fourth grade, fifth grade, eighth grade, and 10th grade. The state is now beginning to publicly report their statewide vocal data. And I actually have a couple of slides tonight of our, our local data that's not yet reported publicly, but in the future, in the near future, the state does intend on making that, these data points, a part of what's available on the DART and what's available publicly. So, one of the data points that I really wanted to pull for you is grade four data, in part because if you think back to our culture and climate survey, we're only surveying students at the middle and the high schools. We've not ever seen student data in grade four. The vocal does assess across multiple categories, student engagement, safety, and learning environment. And some of the questions that you'll see for, for our fourth grade students, my teachers ask me to share what I have learned in a lesson. We're, we're really getting high marks on, on this data. Students plan and work on group projects that solve real problems. These are really, really excellent data points that we're seeing are always true or mostly true for our fourth graders. And it really says something that we had a 78% participation rate in this survey after those students had sat and participated in an MCAS assessment for the entire day. They still wanted to share some positive information about their learning experience in the previous school year. So, I, I just, I, I just thought that was lovely, so I wanted to share that with the, with the group. Something that I would like you to be aware of, in comparison to our culture and climate data, which we're at almost, almost 100% participation rate, our grade 10 data, which is the only data point we have at the high school level for vocal, for vocal survey questions, we're at about 50%. Even still, we do have some data points that are consistent with some of our culture and climate survey data. And as you can see, our teachers are setting high expectations for work and our teachers are inspiring confidence in students' ability to be ready for college and career. So, really great data points to see, even though it is a lower participation rate than what we see on other, on other culture and climate surveys. This is also a slide that I share with you every year. A couple of data points that I wanted to point out to you. We are, we are moving in the right direction in terms of the percentage of students identified as special education students. We have, in fact, according to this data that we've gathered from the state, met our goal in our Plan for Success to reduce our, our special education population by two percentage points. We've done that over the course of our Plan for Success. So, very proud of that and the work that Mr. Michaelazik has done to, to support that through our multi-tiered systems of support and really make sure that we're getting kids what they need through tier one. Also, another data point that I actually added this school year is our English learner population. That was a data point that we had a number of questions about last year. I did, I did show a two-year comparison with the state as well as a multi-year comparison for our English learner population since the 1920s school year. We did see a bit of a jump. We did see a bit of a jump from 2022, 2023 to 23, 24, but but not significant. We have just over 100 students that are a part of that population. In terms of the other data values, our MCAS numbers have have stayed steady. They've been on trend with the state. However, our our SAT performance and our AP performance has increased while the state numbers, if you notice, are moving in the other direction. So we're very proud of those data points. And we we have folks in the room that can speak to that. So I'm not going to talk about those details too much. Ms. Morrissey had mentioned the work that the elementary schools are doing around chronic absenteeism. Just a reminder for families at home, it is very important that our students are in school. Students that are in school and not chronically absent score overwhelmingly better than our students that are chronically absent. So coming to school where the learning happens is very important. Foxborough has stayed on trend with the state where we're drastically reducing the rates of students that are chronically absent. We're not quite at pre-pandemic numbers, but we're very close. And one more thing I wanted to mention about our grade 10 students. There was an announcement in a letter that was included in in Student MCAS scores. For our 10th graders, this past school year, we raised, well, not we, the the state had raised the competency determination cutoff score for the class of 2026. So you will notice that our grade 10 scores have declined in ELA in comparison to previous years, and that is in part because the cutoff score had changed. And if you take a look, you can see that slight dip in our grade 10 ELA scores. That is in part attributed to the change in the competency determination. Also, if you look on the left-hand side of this slide and compare that to the right-hand side of this slide, just wanted to remind the committee that those grade 10 assessments for math, ELA, and science again assess across multiple school years. And when you look at the grades three through eight for math, ELA, and the grade five and eight for science, those scores tend to be lower. They tend to trend lower in comparison to your grade 10 scores, in part because they're a deeper dive into grade-level curriculum standards. So they tend to be a little bit more challenging for our students. And that's consistent with the state as well. That red bar that you see on the far right is the the current state composite score for students meeting or exceeding expectations for those tests. Okay, I am going to skip these and just give you just a big picture view. Our graduation and attendance rates, of course, remain high, consistently higher than the state. Our teacher retention rates are very strong, consistently higher than the state. And our data is trending with the state. The state saw a decline in ELA scores and somewhat steady. Math scores, as well as science scores, ours are ours are similar to that. And our performance on the SAT and AP is outpacing the state and actually trending in the opposite positive direction as compared to the state. So that's something that we're really proud of. Okay. And then with that, I am going to have our curriculum directors and department heads come on up.
Hi, everybody. I'm Noelle Hendrickson. I'm the Math Science Curriculum Director, K to 8.
Karen McKinnon, K to 8, ELA, Social Studies.
And so we were going to talk to you a little bit about some elementary data. Just quickly, thinking about grade three MCAS, we call it the K to three MCAS. Kindergarten first and second grade have a heavy hand in what we're what we're seeing up there. We are above the state in the third grade MCAS, which is wonderful. One of the things that I wanted to share with you today, though, is how we use our local data, our unit assessments, our monthly mini-assessments to drive our talks at PLC around how we can group students and make that data actionable. The MCAS is is something, for sure, but this is what's really driving our work day to day. What you see up there is a data wheel from a from an assessment. And then when what you can do is click on that data wheel, and it will populate with the students that got that performance band. You can also drill down to the standards level. So in our PLC work with teachers, we talk so much about which students need small group for some remediation work and which needs some acceleration and enrichment work. And so that's kind of what you're seeing up there. Our pedagogical model is Math Workshop. It's what drives everything for us. Math Workshop means that there's a mini lesson. We can pull kids for small groups and give them exactly what we need, because we assess kids to instruct them. The assessment is not the end game. It's actually what drives the next step. So I just wanted to show you that. And you see some pictures of kids using our concrete tools, which, again, in Foxborough is something that we 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 use tremendously all the way up through from K to 8. We believe so strongly that the concrete models, the concrete touching of the tools is going to help with the concrete pictorial abstract. So you'll see that there. I just wanted to highlight quickly a couple of problems that came out of the third grade that we did really well in is this properties of multiplication. The NCTAM came out with a position statement around fact fluency. We dove deep into fact fluency, and we really made it a priority for us to up our fact fluency game a little bit with third and fourth grade. I should actually say K to four. And so we saw that the it's really nice when the data speaks to work that you've been really prioritizing. And that's what I wanted to just sort of show show you there. That's the kind of celebrations that the MCAS will give to us at the at the school level. Grade four, our K to four assessment, again, this would never happen if it wasn't for the kindergarten, first, second, and third grade teachers to accomplish that. And if you see that, we are so far above the state. It was a really a lovely data point for us. But what I thought was so wonderful was this idea, there's three different types of questions on the Math MCAS, right? There's a selected response, which is multiple choice, short answer, where they type something in. And then your constructed response questions are those written responses. Most of the time, part A, part B, part C, part D. You're taking through a story. You're reading a ton, and you're typing in your answers. Our students that left us in fourth grade grabbed 74% of those possible points. I've never seen the constructed response total be higher than short answer and selected response. I that's never, I've never seen that before. What I wanted to just point out was I think it's a cross-curricular celebration of writing. I think we've put a big emphasis on writing in elementary school. And so I feel like kids can write and communicate their math thinking because they're learning to be writers. And it's really translating across the curriculum. So I thought that was a really great celebration. Teachers loved getting that feedback. And before I toss it over, what's really nice about this, too, is then we can also up our pedagogical content knowledge as teachers. Okay. So if these kids are great writers, let's think about what are some questions we can put in front of them that are really going to get them to be thinking? And then what can we do to make sure that our kids that are being really successful keep going with that? And how do we intervene with kids that aren't quite there yet? So we're making our piles of student work in PLCs and really talking about what it looks like to be proficient writers in math. I always tell kids, you want to be able to communicate your math thinking just as well as you can communicate your calculations. So I'll toss it over to you.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll talk a little bit about the ELA, not just the MCAS, but our our local screeners as well. This is a slide that talks a little bit about our fast speech growth, which I'm really proud of in the K to four realm. Well, you see there that we had an 8% increase from the fall benchmark in 2023 to the fall benchmark of 2024. So that's a really nice growth. I think it's attributed to the work that we've been doing with structured literacy that we're continuing to do. Science of reading is a big thing out there right now for the elementary education world. We are providing a lot of professional development for teachers on that throughout the year. One of the things that we used to believe about learning to read was that it was natural, like learning to speak. Our brains are wired to learn to speak. But our brains are actually not wired to learn to read, so that the everything is in the brain. But through brain research, they've realized that there's neuropathways that we have to create for for students, for kids, so that they can learn to read anybody, really, adults or or children. But some really fascinating brain research that has happened that we're bringing to the teachers through some professional development and our focus on structured literacy. Our our writing program, we're still working on the Empowering Writers. And, you know, research typically says it takes three to five years before you see the full impact of the work when you make any kind of curricular change. It's it's a shift for teachers and and kids. But I'll show you a little bit of information that leads me to believe that we're we're definitely on the right, the right track for that as well. So this is grade three MCAS graph. The kids are doing well above the above the state. The first time that they take the MCAS is always a bit of a challenge for our third grade students because of the demands of typing on the computer. So we start the year with kids writing, handwriting, because it's just their comfort zone, what they come from in second grade. So their hands are so little, they don't even fit on the keyboards. And we try and transition over a little bit to more typing on the computer. But reading and writing on the computer are definitely a challenge for for our third grade, third grade kids. But we're we're doing, we're doing well there. Fourth grade, too, we're starting to, we're continuing to be above the state and starting to make some some gains, especially in the writing. One of the things that that Empowering Writers really focuses on is teaching the kids the difference between the genres. Because when they're asked to write something, it's a narrative or it's an informational text, and they have to know the structures and what to expect when they're reading a narrative and what to expect when they're writing one. And we've done really well with that. This is a little highlight that I wanted to show you that for our, this is above the state for our essay in fourth grade, 51% of the points versus 35 for the state and 56 for the constructed response, which is a paragraph writing. The third and fourth graders are asked to write a paragraph and then an essay. And so they're doing really well on both of those. And I think that's really attributed to the work that that teachers are doing around that whole idea of genre, so that the kids are really clear on what the question is and what they're expected to write. In the past, we've had kids who it would say to write a story, and they would summarize, right? They were they weren't really clear on the on the expectation. So we've been working really hard on that. That could be you. Oh, I think it's me. Yeah. All right. So on to middle school. This is the fifth grade MCAS, and then we have the sixth grade MCAS. I'm going to talk a little bit about the fifth and in the fifth and sixth grade. We always talk about how there seems to be a little bit of a dip in that shift from the elementary school to the middle school. And I really spent a lot of time thinking about the fifth and sixth grade MCAS and why it seems to be a little bit of a dip. The fourth grade really seems to be coming up and and getting a real strong handle on things. And then it dawned on me that in third and fourth grade, they're asked to write a paragraph and an essay. In fifth grade, they're asked to write only essays, multiple essays, sometimes three essays, because there's two that count for score and then a third one that's that's sent in there as they call the matrix, which is the sample one. That is a lot of writing and requires a lot of stamina. So I feel like that's where we're, we haven't shifted and made as much of a gain in the writing in fifth and sixth grade. So we've talked, I've talked a lot this year with the with the teachers about that whole idea of building their writing stamina and asking them to do short writes in one period of time. Prior to Empowering Writers, we used to do Lucy Cawkins writing, which you'd write one essay over six weeks, right? That's, that's a really long time to come up with one piece. We need short sit writes where they're really going from, you know, beginning to end and and doing what it is that they can. So that's going to be a shift in our instruction this year. One of the other things that we're doing is a lot of cross-curricular and trying to connect Social Studies and ELA, which is very easy in fifth and sixth grade. But in seventh and eighth grade, they're also doing some work on, seventh grade is doing a novel read in Social Studies attached to a writing piece, so really the crossover of the standards. And then eighth grade humanities or Social Studies and ELA are actually doing a cross-curricular writing, which is allowing them to choose a, they're using a Social Studies topic, and they're writing during both periods, ELA and Social Studies. So that's allowing them to have some of those longer chunks of time where the kids are stretching their stamina for reading and writing, which I think is really going to be a good thing for us and help us, help us in the future. But our seventh grade MCAS and eighth grade MCAS, we're also, we're, we're good. We're making strides in the, in the right direction. And continuing with with Common Lit as well, being a standards-aligned assessment, teachers are really comfortable looking at the standards, trying to decide and and being able to decide what kids need in order to move forward and show mastery of those of those standards at grade levels.
Okay. So for math, again, we are above the state in grade five, grade six, grade seven, and grade eight. But what I think is really important that sets us apart in Foxborough is, again, in the middle school, we have a workshop model. That's not the case in most middle schools. That's why we get visits from other people, because they want to see this workshop model in the middle school. And so in five through eight, we have that model where students have a menu. There's choice, there's voice, there's agency, there's a mini lesson. That doesn't happen everywhere. And we've worked really hard to refine what that looks like for kids and to get teachers really close to those standards as well by looking at those data, looking at data and having regular sort of rhythms of data collection. If you look at what you see up there, that's the seventh grade at a glance. Those are all of their unit assessments and quizzes. Again, it's in illuminate. Our kids are very used to taking digital assessments. They've been taking them since second grade online. So again, all of it is sort of at our fingertips, and we can dive in and we can take a look at all of that data. That's just a real glimpse. If you click on things, you can see which students are populated in which sort of bands, so we can really make that data actionable, which kids are ready to fly, and which kids need some remediation. So those data analysis rhythms are there. And again, those kids are so used to, by eighth grade, Math Workshop is just how they learn. And so it was kind of interesting to talk to the eighth grade teachers and say that, you know, you don't have to explain to them what this is. They've been doing it since kindergarten. So it is really neat to see them sort of in that whole trajectory of of Math Workshop. And as you see them in small groups and doing all their great stuff. And again, grade six was above the state, grade seven above the state. And we like to say that we send them off to high school, really well positioned to move to move to the high school with lots of kids that are meeting and exceeding expectations. That's grade three through eight, just as a historical look from 2021 during COVID, coming out of COVID. And we just like to, I showed this actually today in a seventh grade meeting, just knowing that our, our, the shape of those graphs remains really consistent. Yes, we always have work that we can do. Yes, we can look at those standards and dig in in PLC time, of course. But the shape of that data has been pretty consistent for the last few years. Okay, shifting over to science. This is fifth grade versus the state. We're pretty much a little bit above the state, but pretty much at the state level. Dr. Burrows did mention that grade five MCAS is grade test, test standards in grades three, four, and five. You also heard the the elementary principals talk about in their SIPs, making space for for some STEM experiences. So we're excited to to let you know that the data has shown that we we need that. We are going to have a STEM teacher starting out in grade three and four next year in our elementary schools. We're going to be working on posting that position, talking about the curriculum that goes along with that, and giving kids the opportunity in grades three and four to have a science class that they will attend. And that's going to be a regular thing for them. So that's going to be exciting, hopefully to expand that. But for next year, we're going to start with grades three and four. And this is eighth grade versus the the state. What I sort of wanted to share with you, too, is you see some of the engineering standards for eighth grade from 2023 to 2024. The middle school has been so, we're so lucky to have Project Lead the Way courses offered in grades five, six, seven, and eight at the middle school, which is amazing, these hands-on courses ranging from medical detectives to green architecture to robotics. I think really speak to why these technology standards are are rising. I think we need more of these experiences, and that's why we're putting it going down to grades three and four to try to help, help with this as well and bridge that. But we were really excited to see that. And we're just so lucky to have Project Lead the Way courses at the middle school and have the administration support all of that work as well. And then the last piece of science is we're transitioning to a new state assessment. We will be piloting, not, yes, we will be a part of the pilot this spring. But what's so nice about this is this transition from sort of these concrete, like, rote questions from, that I'm a fifth grader, that I'm supposed to learn in third grade. It's more transitioning now into those practice standards. There'll be simulations that students go through. It's almost like a story, and they learn to navigate the simulation. And then they answer questions based on what they see and then write a response to based on what they see. So it's so much more authentic to what they're actually doing. And what's really great is we have been allowed to purchase materials that simulate the simulation and that students have that simulate the simulation and that students have already started working on and have been loving it, because it's really, it's so engaging. Again, you're seeing students going through, like, you know, a tornado or something like that, and they're going through and they're able to really interact with it. And then the questions are so authentic, because they just watched that simulation. Or they're able to move the temperature and see what happens and then write about it, like, it's so much more authentic. So we're really excited to have that new assessment come on board, too, in science, because we feel like it's really going to align so much better with our practices as well.
I think that's it for us.
Do you guys have any questions for us?
Yes.
I just want to say it's so exciting to watch you guys present, because you just feel your energy and positivity and excitement about everything you do. So thank you. That comes across so clearly to me every time you've come to this table. So I really do appreciate that. And I'm sure the students feel it, too, so thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments?
Ms. McKinnon, you mentioned doing, practicing their writing. What was the word you used?
Stamina.
Thank you, stamina. Any talk of doing that with science as well?
Absolutely. Because what, I think what you're trying to accomplish is a cross-curricular, is cross-curricular for sure, absolutely, yep.
Amazing. Anyone else have any comments? I just can't thank you enough. It's really, it's such a pleasure to have you guys present. Thank you.
Thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. We should probably introduce ourselves again.
Could you take a moment to introduce yourself before we jump into the high school data?
Shannon Wazalowski, English Department Head.
Alyssa Macharnik, Science Department Head.
Andy Sirovio, Guidance Department Head.
And Tim Johansmeyer, Math Department Head.
Nope, don't know what I'm doing. This can't be that hard.
Hooray. Okay. So looking at the 2024 results, we can see that we had fifty-one percent of students meet or exceed expectations. And when we compare the 2024 results with this same cohort's eighth grade ELA scores from 2022, we can see movement going in the right direction with students moving from not and partially meeting into meeting and exceeding. I also want to highlight that in the 2024 scores, the not-meeting scores actually do contain students that are not, that were not in the 10th grade, that took it as 11th graders or as 12th graders. So it's slightly a different percentage there. So it's a little misleading. And this year's juniors, who were the sophomores that took this test, have a different cut score. So the ones who were in the current class of 2025 have a different cut score than is represented here. So drilling into, yep, the types of questions, we found that our students continue to do well on the parts of the exam that are measuring analytical and critical thinking. Our reading and language skill scores are at and above the state scores. Our students did also show some good progress on the writing section, which is really good to see. We have taken some of the data from last year's MCAS, this year's MCAS, and we've set a goal of enhancing our writing curriculum by breaking longer writing assignments into smaller parts, which is helping teachers provide more detailed feedback on the writing process, helping students focus on each component of that process and building their writing skills incrementally. We've also implemented regular in-class writing assignments and assessments in each grade and level to improve both continuous practice and feedback and to help our students build writing stamina, because we've seen that that is also a problem with our 10th graders who take the MCAS. They have no place to practice writing essays for two to three hours at a time. And so we're hoping that our regular practices are going to help build that stamina for them. And yeah, that's, yep, that's it. That's English.
So diving to the math stuff, overall, our results were fairly consistent with what we saw last year. We continue to outpace the state in both the exceeding and meeting expectations category. And we're also doing better in the partially meeting and not meeting. Again, we're positive differences in the ones you want to be positive, negative where you want to be negative. The gap between us and the state in not-meeting expectations has actually grown a couple of points since last year. And just another noteworthy point is that of that four percent of our students who are not meeting, five of them hadn't taken a geometry course yet because they've had a variety of interruptions to their educational experiences. So not entirely surprising that a huge chunk of the tests they hadn't had much experience with. So we're really expecting a lot of those students to find success the second time around. A lot of them were within one or two points on their raw score. So we're really optimistic about how it'll go with those students. Here you can see our breakdown, the last four years. As with the elementary and middle school math data, we do see a lot of consistency. Our scores were very similar to last year, where we had seen a little bit of a jump in that exceeding expectations group. Obviously, we'd like to continue pushing those percentages larger in the higher end of that table. Another big highlight for us is that in every single domain and cluster assessed on the exam, we score above the state in every single one of them. Second year in a row that we've done that. And although like the MCAS is a, it's a summative assessment, we do treat it as a formative assessment. At the same time, we're always looking at those, seeing what are our areas of strength, where are ours we can grow in. And we're constantly using this to inform our next steps. Going along with that, too, if you look at individual questions, there were only two questions on the entire exam where our students underperformed the state. And again, you can see they're relatively small margins as well. So again, we're really happy with that consistent positive outcomes that we're seeing across the MCAS results. And then just kind of going forward, generally speaking as a department, we are in a curriculum review year. We're at the very beginning of that process. So throughout the year, we'll be doing a deeper dive, really looking under the hood at what's going on in our math classrooms. And another part of that process that's really great is that it allows us to come together as a K-12 unit to really make sure our students are getting consistent positive experiences across their K-12 math journey throughout their time in Foxborough. As a department at the high school, we continue to implement practices from a book called Building Thinking Classrooms. We've been working on that for a few years now. We find a lot of the practices are really just starting to get more ingrained in who we are as a department. Students know what to expect, they know what they're getting, and that allows us to start considering next steps, right? Where do we keep pushing and moving forward there? At our professional development just last week, we're taking time exploring and messing around with, how could we use self-assessment rubrics to help students better understand for themselves where they're at, where they're going, all that sort of thing? So just constantly looking at, yes, we're happy with how things are going. How can we keep pushing onto those next steps? Another focus of our curriculum review this year will be looking at, how can we improve some of the equity gaps that we do see across some of our student groups? We've put a larger focus on co-teaching in recent years to try and help to close some of those gaps. So another thing we'll continue exploring. And the whole curriculum review process is something we're really looking forward to. The conversations, even just at the first meeting that we've had, they're engaging, they're deep, and it's really promising for what's to come for the rest of the year. Just like we hold our students to a high standard, we also do the same thing for ourselves. And I really can't say enough great things about the teachers that I get the privilege of leading. It's a group that facilitates great student outcomes already, but none of us are too proud to admit that there's still room to improve always. And everyone's always willing to dive into stuff and just keep improving.
All right. So an ongoing issue that we have in science is that it's called the 10th grade science exam, but we give the 10th grade science exam to ninth graders. So depending on where you go looking for our data, you might see different things. I just wanted to be clear that the data in the top left is what's considered our current 10th grade data, and it represents the current juniors, whereas that data is now almost eighteen months old. And our actual data you'll see is in the bottom right there, representing the current sophomores who took this last spring as freshmen. So depending on where you go looking on Desi's website, you may see something different, and that is why. But they're all there, you just have to click on the right page. So another thing I wanted to highlight is that, again, if you looked at these as a trend from 22 to 23 to 24, you might be disappointed, because we've not quite kept up in the meeting and exceeding categories the way we had in past years. But if you compare it to their eighth grade performance, you can see that we're moving more kids into meeting and exceeding, just like we have in the past. It's an issue of where they started. And this group missed a lot of middle school. So we're working on building up those critical thinking skills again. But that brings us to this great news. So in all four of our domains, we only have four. For math, I think had seventeen up there. We are beating the state, and we are in the science practices as well. But those science practices, there are eight different practices. And one of them that's really important is, to me, Elise, is the evidence reasoning and modeling practice. We spend a lot of time asking students to figure things out. And as we move into our new biology curriculum, we'll be spending even more time asking them to figure it out themselves. You may remember that we went through curriculum review two years ago. And last year, we began our rollout with the new physics curriculum. This year, we've now introduced the new chemistry curriculum. And we're piloting our first unit from biology this spring. And it'll be in ecology, which is a standout for us already. Those highlighted scores where we were much higher than the state on individual questions are a mix of ecology, heredity, evolution. But the, sorry, but none of the issues in questions that are under the state performance are in ecology. And that may be because things are going really well in ecology, and it may be an issue of recency, because that is the last unit that they teach before we go into MCAS. And so we're going to be piloting that ecology unit with the deeper thinking again in our new curriculum this spring, leading right into MCAS. And then the thing I'm most excited about on this is question number 16, which it's really hard to see those numbers. But it's an open response question where we are like head and shoulders above the state. And when you go looking for these questions where, oh, where did, you know, what kind of question did we beat the state in by the most? You're expecting that it's going to be the selected response, which is the fancy way of saying basically multiple choice. But all of the open response were ahead of the state, which means all of the places where they have to stop, they have to think, they probably have to read a graph, read a paragraph, and then respond to that information that they just took in and combine it with something that they learned in class. They're putting that all together. And again, that comes back to like being really excited, because so many of those questions focus on evidence reasoning and modeling. And I think that's all I've got.
All right. So for PSAT data, our information, our data has been pretty consistent the past few years. Our scores are basically in the same range. And when we look at the FHS scores, which is only our junior class from the past couple of years, we've consistently been above the national average. We've been above the state average in the 21 and the 22 tests. For the 23 tests, we were slightly below, but our scores were almost exactly the same as the 22 tests. It's just that the state average jumped up a little bit. Our performance as Foxborough High School students was pretty much the same. The PSATs were taken this year on October 16th. Results just came out. Now that it's a digital format, results are back in about three weeks. It used to be about six to eight weeks on the written form. So those results just came back. I haven't taken a look at them yet, since they're so fresh. But I'm excited to kind of see how this year's group did. So whether the student is really planning on taking the SATs or planning on going to college or not, the PSATs, we find it's really important for students to say like, all right, what am I good at, what am I not so great at? Even if a student has no plan on taking the SATs or has no plan on going to college, they can still find out a lot about themselves and figure out what they're maybe pretty strong in, what they're not so great in, and kind of adapt that way for the remainder of their junior year. We, like I said, we do value it. We have, we've been taking the juniors to have the PSATs done for longer than I've been at Foxborough High School, which is a pretty long time. So we pay for the exam, we register everyone, we do it during the school day. Students just come to school like they normally do, they take the exam, it's all set for them. So there's really very little heavy lifting for them to kind of expose the test, see what's going on, and then hopefully they'll take the SATs in the spring. So we jump ahead to SATs. We have the averages from, it's the mean, the evidence-based reading, writing, and the math. We look at 22, 23, and then 24. We're pretty consistent year to year, a little higher, a little lower in some places. But overall, we've done a really good job staying kind of on point of where we need to be. Like always, there's going to be a little bit of an ebb and flow, a little bit of a dip, a little bit of a bump up. That's pretty typical, but we're pretty proud of where we are. And then the three-year averages, I think, is interesting, because we're talking about Foxborough High School, we're talking about the state, and something called all testers. So a couple of years ago, College Board broke the data down by national. And then they broke it down to all testers, and national wasn't an option. Now it's a combo, so it's national and all testers. So for the kind of consistency for the past couple of years, I'm like, let's go with the all testers and keep it that way. So when we look at the mean, we are above the state and the all tester average. Evidence-based reading and writing, we're exactly the same as the state. We're above the national. And then for math, we're above both the state and the all testers. So we've done a really good job, I think, over the three years, staying where we need to be. I think what's really interesting is as COVID kind of has come and gone, and a lot of schools have become test optional, we've still kind of stayed approximately the same with our SAT scores. Like I said, some places are a little higher. And that could be because maybe there's less students taking it. I think it's also kind of a testament to our teachers who have done a phenomenal job from elementary into middle school into high school, preparing students for what they need to do, whether it's a SAT or not an SAT. So I do think that our teachers do a phenomenal job preparing students. It is interesting to see that there are more colleges now becoming less test optional. They're saying, we're requiring the test or recommending the test. We have some colleges that our students this year are going through saying, they're saying their test's optional, but they're strongly recommending that they send the scores. So that becomes a little bit of an issue for some students who are like, you know what, maybe as a junior, like, I didn't plan on taking the SATs. And then senior year, they're like, oh, I have to like really kind of move and get it done. So I think we're really pushing students, no matter who you are, to take the test, see where you are, see what's going to happen, because you don't know as your junior self where you're going to be during senior year. We want to make sure those doors stay open. So AP, there's been a little bit of a jump for the number of tests administered. We look at the number of students from last year to this year, and it went down a little bit, but that's pretty typical year to year based on like the size of the junior and senior classes, which are the majority of students taking the exams. So even though we went down slightly, the number of exams increased, which is pretty impressive. So as we look and we say, all right, there's less students taking the test, there's more tests, so either there are more students taking multiple tests or the students who are already taking multiple tests are taking even more of those tests. But either way, we're increasing the number. And then when we look at how the students scored, we look at where we were in 2022. There was, 313 tests were scored as a three or better. Twenty-three was 343. And then last year in 24, we had 371. So it's been an increase each year. And again, this really goes back to the teachers and the work they do with the students every day. Our percentages are pretty comparable to that. It's just like the correlation there. So I think what I like about this whole process is I've been like, you know, I'm going to see if I can find any information. So I did a kind of a deep dive. I found this kind of report from 2010. And at that time, there were 121 students who took an AP, and there were 214 tests. So we look at last year, that's an increase of 75 students and an increase of 280 tests in 14 years. So it's a lot, it's a pretty big number. I'm really kind of hoping to do a real, real deep dive next year and kind of get into the weeds. It's hard to kind of dig out all this information, but I do think it's really what we do as a school. We value learning, we value teaching, we value education. And I think as students have changed, as the environment changes, society has changed, we've done the best we can to adapt to that and give students the opportunity to learn. And like I've said in the past, we're not saying you have to be, you know, the top 10, 15, 20 of your class to take an AP. Like really, anyone can take an AP. Everyone should really take an AP. It's a great opportunity for learning. It's a great opportunity to see what a different type of learning is and what kind of a glimpse of what college life could be for students. So we really, as counselors, when we're sitting with the students, we go off the teacher recommendations as to what, you know, the teacher sees every day. It's like, hey, your teacher says, you know, this AP, you know, chem class might be a right fit for you. And we sounded out with them like, yeah, it's going to be tough. But based on where you've been for the past couple of years, this could be a course that you're going to have to find some success, and you just have to kind of work at it. So we really value kind of the student as a whole. We really value kind of pushing students out of their comfort zone and trying to find some success that way. Just a couple of quick highlights based on some of the AP tests. So our scores year to year kind of go up and down. Like they're within a little bit of a range, sometimes a little higher, sometimes a little lower. They're pretty close though overall. But there were three tests in particular that kind of stood out. One was AP Calculus AB. So in 2023, the average score was a 3.32. 2024, it was a 4.18. AP Physics in 2023 was a three, went to a 3.45, and that's with both parts, the electricity, magnetism, and the mechanics. And then AP US History, 2023, it's a 3.3, and then went to a 3.96. So really, a lot of that is definitely the students and their work ethic, but it's also Carolyn Carlson for AP Calculus, it's Alyssa Maternik for AP Physics, and it's Dan Grady for AP US History. I mean, I think we really do a great job as Foxborough High School. I think the staff works really well together to do what's best for students. I think as department heads, we work well to try to figure out like, what are you doing in your department that now we can do in our department? And our main goal is just to try to get students past where they feel comfortable and get them to a place where they feel uncomfortable, so they start kind of feeling that success and feeling that they can grow and becoming a better student, a better person.
Any questions?
No. This is so impressive, so much data. This is just, it's a lot. I love that you went back to 2010 to sort of see the differences in where we've grown and where we've gone. COVID was a rough time. Like it was for everybody, for every reason and whatever, but it's great to see everything going back in such a good direction. But it's good that you guys, that you look back with that lens too and recognize that it was a hard time for the students, for everybody. So thank you. I appreciate that. Any questions from anyone?
I have a quick question about the ELA portion of the MCAS. On the MCAS, there are two writing portions for that. That's true at all grade levels?
I'm less familiar.
There's two.
Yeah, there's two.
There's two? Was it always two?
No. When we changed to the 2.0, it changed the type of writing assessments they were taking.
Because, okay, so...
Do three?
Three. Okay, so it was three and it dropped to two. So that's just interesting, and this is not, this, just on the MCAS test, you could completely tank the writing portion and still do very well because now there's less, writing has less of an impact. I'm not, that's not a statement on you, but I was just questioning that. So I, I'm not remembering that incorrectly. It was three and it did drop to two.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Now I was just asking clarification on that. So that is interesting on that. But I do appreciate that you're still working on the writing portion, even though it is now less, you know, a lesser part of the test. I really appreciate this overview of this. This is like actually one of my favorite parts of the presentation where all the data chunking gets. I find this very interesting. I really am fascinated by all of this, and I love to see the numbers go up. So thank you very much.
Sure. Okay. My question is, when we were looking at, so I'll compare a little bit of the science to the ELA at the high school. You had mentioned with the science that, you know, kind of telling the story of every year is going to have its own graph profile because it's a different group of kids. And so you want to look at the overtime data. Oh, do we have a sense of that? Or do you have a sense of that, Dr. Woz, for the ELA data?
Yeah, the shape of the graphs.
You had a nice snapshot of their grade, this cohort's grade eight versus grade 10 and, you know, moving in the right direction and all that.
Yeah. The shape of the graphs for the last few years has been very similar, similar to what we've seen in the other presentations.
Okay. And then to follow up to that, and I guess if you're looking, you guys might be on single page. For us, it's the ELA graphs that's on our page 25. It's basically in the high school section above the student strength graph, so the graph that shows the two cohorts. Grade 20, yeah, so 2024 versus the 2022 same cohort. Struck by something, and I just wanted, you know, just your thoughts if there are any because you don't have insight into, you know, breaking apart the state data really. But the difference in the, in the grade eight, you had statewide, 7% getting that exceeds. Two years later, 14% getting exceeds compared to Foxborough, four versus five. And I wondered your thoughts on that, both in terms of, I know, you know, curricular changes are always going on and whatnot, and just what, what are your thoughts squinting at that difference?
That's a good question. I hadn't actually really thought about the change in the state data from eighth to 10th with that same cohort.
Sure.
But yeah, I think, thinking about the progress from middle school into high school, the writing programs where students are being met in ninth grade focusing on reading. When they come to us in ninth grade, we attack them with reading. And probably not as much writing.
Right.
And I think that's probably different around the state because we think like reading is so important. And we've seen our reading scores go up over the last couple of years.
Sure.
And so, you know, attacking them with that reading has been really beneficial.
Yeah.
But I think on the reverse, making sure that they are practicing their writing more and more and having that test stamina, I think it really goes back to that test stamina of they just don't get the practice.
Well, yeah, and that's true. But also, I think, and that's why I just wanted to hear your thoughts on it, because it also goes to your goals for the department and matching in with the district and all that. And I mean, I think one thing that the statewide vote made clear is that a lot statewide, people don't want the test wagging the dog in terms of what you guys do day in, day out in your high school classrooms. But it is just, I thought it was just interesting, worth looking at. And if you, if, you know, and as you interrogate that data further and look at it matching up the curriculum, if you and your team are saying, no, we're really attacking close reading, and we're, you know, focused less on, you know, them gaming out the test, then so be it.
Yeah.
And I, you know...
The other piece too, that could potentially be a factor here is those students, actually all of our students in Foxborough are in year three of Empowering Writers.
Right.
Implementation or year four. Are we on year four at this point?
This is year...
Yeah, so year three. So we've not had really that long-term consistency with that program.
You're talking about from the pre-high school forward?
From K to eight.
Okay.
Correct. From K to eight. And then the other additional item that I'm thinking about, and Karen, please feel free to jump in on this, is an added package that we purchased this past school year and are continuing with this school year, is the Common Lit Assessment package as well. We've been using the Common Lit curriculum since coming out of the curriculum review, but we've not also purchased that assessment package in addition to. And that's happening at the middle school level where our students are getting more practice with comprehension questions in an online platform in the same way that they're getting those comprehension questions on the math side and with those simulations in the science, in the science classes at the middle school level in this current school year. They've not necessarily had that repeat exposure as these 10th grade results kind of show that, you know, they've not had that consistent exposure to what those MCAS comprehension questions might look like. So I think they'll move, but I think that's the indicator and the gap.
The effect of that.
That we're seeing. Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, that does remind me, we've had that slow shift since the curriculum review. And so these students are at the tail end of that shift with that, with the change in curriculum at the middle school level and then heading up to us. So that's a good reminder.
Well, thank you for your analysis. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the data, everybody.
Appreciate it.
I mean, I would just say, an overview of, sorry, of all the data we saw today is that since COVID, we're going in the right direction, and I think it's very promising to see year after year, it looks like we're just getting stronger and stronger academically. So that's a testament to all the students, the staff, the faculty, admin, everyone else involved. So we're doing good.
Hundred percent. Anything else?
No.
No? Well, thank you very much for all your hard work. I know this is months and months of, combination of months and months of work and research and analysis. I do appreciate it, and thank you for being here tonight. One thing I just wanted to pose to the board, and actually, I'm glad that you're all still here, is that I was looking at everything, and pre-COVID, this was always broken out into elementary and high school, so that there were two separate presentations. This is really less for you and more for the committee. Just kind of thinking about like post-COVID and how we look now, there's just so much, so much data. I don't know if there's, if anyone sees any value in breaking them out into two separate meetings to sort of do a deeper dive into the elementary and the high school. Any thoughts from the committee on that?
Yes.
I could go, one, I could go either way because they're so thorough. Both groups are so thorough with the information we get that we can sit there and compare them. Though it is a harder mental lift to take it, take everything in, and it is on you all, I actually, I appreciate the side-by-side kind of comparison in terms of looking at trends, especially in light of tonight's meeting where we're talking about the elementary's school improvement plans and how that builds off the district. I don't know. I appreciate the cohesiveness, but that's just me.
Okay. Any other...
And I could go, honestly, I could go either way if that was the will of the committee.
Any other opinions?
I actually think it makes more sense to do it in one evening, partially because our calendar is so full. And I agree with Brent, it's nice seeing it side by side and seeing the entire student journey versus breaking it out where there may be inconsistencies in our thought. Based on our feedback tonight, we did have some questions on the data, but I don't think that we dove very deeply into a lot of the data. There certainly is more here that we could dive more deeply into. So I'm not sure what extra time would actually give us.
Okay.
That's a fair point.
I see pros and cons. Oh, sorry. Thank you. I mean, I see pros and cons into both. But for right now, because we're still talking about COVID and the fact that we're still jumping back between the elementary and the high school to look at the data for right now, it might be easier to do that. And once that comparison stops, then we maybe can consider breaking it into two. But it is helpful to consider somebody that was taking a test at this point was at this point here and then making that comparison because you're seeing where, you know, where the impact happened and where it dropped off. So, and I'm hoping that's just for a little bit longer, and soon we won't be talking about that anymore, and you know, it won't be...
If you shall pass.
Yeah, I know. But so for right now, that's the only reason why I find it helpful because there's still people who are half-half, like on the, you know, going from middle school to high school.
I mean, to me, there's no difference, but I do think Michelle brings up a good point, kind of seeing the students that were dealing with COVID and kind of how it affects them still. And I think once we get through that generation of students that were in school during COVID, I think then we can split it up and it'll easily be smoother.
Okay.
Sure.
Dr. Wurdest, you, I mean, I don't, I do remember having it be two separate meetings, but what was the history of that? Like what, why did we do it?
We, so a couple of different things. One, we would have kind of K to eight, and then we had nine to 12 to split it up, so that way you could kind of chunk it, if you will. We also reported out on many other data points with our baseline and benchmark assessments, but you've heard mentioned a number of times this evening, change in curriculum that therefore it didn't make sense to report on those data points because it was a baseline for us. So you don't have that information going forward.
Right.
So it is, it is a lengthy presentation, and as it was already said, an exorbitant amount of work, but it's also, as you can see, it's taken very seriously as far as what they do with teachers. And we always say too, it doesn't matter whether it's our own assessments that are common assessments or state-level assessments, we look at that data and it's either curriculum or it's instruction.
Right.
We're looking at the standards, and then we're going back and we're looking at, well, what are we doing instructionally, or what does our curriculum look like? It's truly that simple.
Perfect. Well, thank you. Thank you all for indulging the conversation. I appreciate it. Thank you all for being here and for all your hard work. Tonight was hugely informative and helpful. Thank you.
And we are so lucky to have all of you and all the teachers that do this every single day.
Very, very proud, teachers, students, administration. We have a great, great team here in Foxborough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And before you go home, I just want to thank our department heads and our curriculum directors just one last time. I, this is my favorite part of kickstarting the school year, when all of the assessment data comes out, and we get to talk to each other about the decisions that we're going to be making. And, you know, we really get into the weeds with the analysis of these student outcomes. So my favorite part of the year, and I really appreciate you all working with me on it, and really just a fantastic job, and I'm so grateful for the work that you do in Foxborough. Thank you.
Thank you. You should clap after that. Thank you. All right. So now we're on to a community update, and start with Rob.
I would just be remiss if I didn't take one last time to promote the musical at the high school this weekend. So you're a good man, Charlie Brown, Friday night, 7:30, Saturday afternoon, 2:00 p.m., and Saturday evening at 7:30.
And for the whole family.
Thank you, Rob.
Neat. Michelle?
I do have a quick CPAC update. CPAC is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. They are hosting a virtual presentation tomorrow night, again, on the new IEP. Hopefully, again, soon, you know, we'll be done talking about the new IEP, and we can just get on with it. But they are putting one out. It is tomorrow night at 7:00 p.m. if anybody is interested.
Awesome. Brent?
For my small part, I just wanted to thank everyone at the high school and admin for all the work you put together for the NEAS visit a couple of weeks ago. Herculean effort in the writing before they come, and even bigger effort once they are on the ground. So I hope you all get out of it everything that, everything that you want to. But from my view out the window in the session that I had, I thought it went beautifully. And I thought the committee was very interested and very informed on what you all were doing, at least from the context that they would put into their questions. So I think you guys got a good crew, and I know you all put your best foot forward. And so thank you so much for the effort. It's huge.
I would just say thank you to you and Sarah for participating in that. We did have, when they spoke at the end to the staff, it was really complimentary of the work of the teachers and the administration, everyone at the high school. In Dr. Donovan's newsletter that went out, which will also soon be on the website, there's a video that was done that you can watch, and it's got students talking about the experience at Foxborough High School, and it is just fantastic.
Great.
So I know that he's working on, is it on the website yet?
You know, I haven't looked, but it will be soon. We will, we will get it up there.
It's in his newsletter that went out to families, for high school families anyway, to be able to see. And I just think that it just really encapsulates everything that teachers were talking about. But what was so wonderful is, and their commendations and they were talking about, is the students from, you know, helping them out... and they were talking about is the students, from, you know, helping them out in the hallway, just really being right there, talking about their experiences, watching. They were just really complimentary. So we're looking forward to the report. And as always, we're going to have areas that we're going to focus on. But the nice thing with the new process with NEASC is that we're identifying a lot of that work, and they're looking to see kind of the, the fruits of our labor, if you will, and what we're doing to go forward on that. And then the last thing is the MASIS conference, joint conference with MASCE, the last week, a lot of really good sessions. And I know that you plan to have that as part of a future agenda item. So that was a really good opportunity to continue to learn.
Yes, hundred percent. Dr. Burrows?
That video that Dr. Donovan put in the newsletter is really wonderful. Please watch it and have tissues ready. It is just, it's, it's really good, just hearing from kids and hearing how wonderful their high school experience has been. It's just, it, it's great. It's really great stuff.
It's great to see the data, but it's nice to see the student, the end result and student piece of it too. Karen, no. Do you guys have anything else you wanted to add? No?
Oh, we forgot to say that there were the student presentations with NEASC when they came and that they just, they were really complimentary towards all of the students because we had like a gallery walk in the media center. Teachers submitted student work that was good, like represented all of the like vision of the graduate standards and stuff. And then we did a gallery walk and the committee came and just walked through and asked us questions about all of our projects. I, were you in the gallery walk?
Yeah.
We were both there.
Yeah.
And there was just, there was a ton of kids there, and it was really great.
It was really nice. They were, they were really impressed by all like the student work and stuff, and they were asking questions. I did talk about the vision of a grad poster, and they were super impressed. Like they had no questions for us. It was really nice and refreshing to see that.
Well, that's great.
Point of pride, for sure.
Oh, for sure. And thank you guys for your feedback on that. That's awesome. It's great to see. Positive experience all around. That's a nice thing. I was, you stole my thunder. I was going to talk about MASCE. Hopefully we'll put it on an agenda to do a little wrap up at a later date for sure, because it was great. And it was a lot of content, always, always very positive. But now, can I have a motion to adjourn from anyone?
So moved.
A second?
A second.
I'm in favor. All right, we are adjourned.